Alright, hello everyone, full crowd. Today is Tuesday, May 21st. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. After we do the pledge of allegiance, we are going to stay standing for the National Anthem and God Bless America. Okay, can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming and presenting that to us. You are more than free to stay or leave and you are the reason why we do what we do, so thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sylvia, do you need to say anything else? No, you're okay, alright. At this point, we, school choice hearing.
And as you can see in your packets, we are recommending again to vote to not accept school choice from other districts for the 2019-2020 school year.
Okay, can we have, we do need a vote on this, so can we have a motion to not accept school choice pupils from other districts for the 2019-2020 school year? Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimous, thank you. Alright, approval of minutes, payroll and warrants. Approval of the minutes for April 9th, they were in our packet, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 9th? Motion to approve. There a second? Second. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. No opposed? Passes unanimous? Alright, and approval of payroll and warrants, can I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Okay? Second. Alright, all those in favor? Aye. Alright, so those are all set. Alright, delegation, so there is a lot of you here tonight, I know some of you are due to present, thank you very much, it's nice to have a crowd. Okay, so for delegation, do I have anyone that would like to speak for public comment? No? Okay. Old business, 2019-2020 school calendar requires a vote.
Yes, so just to remind everybody, we had a month to look it over. The one question that the committee had was the extending the Christmas holiday. I did bring that concern back to the leadership team and people felt like they would rather have the days in June versus the two days in January, so, I mean, it didn't matter to me.
Sure.
And that's no snow days built into this, obviously, so, you know, we'd be looking at getting out possibly June 15th. If we vote on this tonight, this will stand, the only thing that may change, we are in the middle of negotiations and if any days change in negotiations, I would bring this back to the committee and we would just take a look at any tweaks if, you know, anything changes with the calendar.
Okay, great, does anyone have any questions? No? No? Alright, with no questions, I'll take it to vote. Can I have a vote to approve the 2019-2020 school calendar as presented? Motion.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Alright, unanimous, thank you. Alright, moving along. Alright, new business, superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey.
At this time, I'd like to call up Mrs. Beck, the principal at Acushnet Elementary. She will be introducing her students for a special presentation by the student council tonight.
I'm just going to wake up our laptop.
Okay.
And I know that they've worked hard all year, I've seen them at assemblies, but they've been very involved in the business of the school, so I'm really excited to learn about what they have to present to us tonight.
Excellent.
And I am excited as well, I was told to pick, make sure I speak into the mic, I was excited that they showed up and we thank the parents for bringing them to this governing body, that's what we try to instill in them, to have a voice for their community, for their school, and it's my pleasure to introduce Ethan Bryant, who is our vice president, and he will speak to you next.
Good evening, Mrs. Tavars, Mrs. Downing, Mr. Tara, Mrs. Gomes, Mr. Summer, Mr. DeTerra, Dr. Bailey, and Mrs. Flynn. Here with us are one of our co-advisors, Mrs. Beck. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our accomplishments, hopes, and dreams for the 2018-2019 school year.
Here are some of our accomplishments. Helen asked how to talk about our accomplishments. First, we meant once a month to talk about what was important to students, and then we planned.
Then, we have worked hard, meeting with the cafeteria staff, to discuss adding in additional healthy lunch choices. We are able to bring salads to our school meals. We also now have ranch dressing for the veggies.
That's important.
It's very important.
This will come back to this slide. This is a drawing for the proposed school store, Sarah Parrott, who won our contest a few years ago. Our artist resident designed what the front of the school store would look like in the cafeteria, so, well, they'll talk more about that in this presentation.
And there we go.
What we're hoping for in this school year is to continue to rally for a school salad bar and more options for our school lunch and breakfasts. We hope to get more of their sponsors to support us, they'll save you a journey once their special meal is ready in the cafeteria. Design passion for children, to open a new school where students can accomplish their interests and their skills. The power award system is tied into the PBIS.
So if you look up there, we're hoping to translate all those cat coins, parents, you can bring them back, and we'll now have what we call paw coins, and each coin will have a value, and that value will be tied in the economy system, economics, as well as the PBIS. So students will earn paw coins based on the word of the week, which we will tie into our social competency curriculum with the power card. So for example, the teacher measures how a student is showing this citizenship, we'll have it rolled out in our assembly, they'll look for it during the week, and students can earn one of these values to shop at the school store.
Four, the Wildcat Den will be open one day a month for each grade level. Student council and staff volunteers will run the store, first grade Monday, second grade Tuesday, third grade Wednesday, fourth grade Thursday, and pre-k and kindergarten Monday.
And we're working with the K, the pre-k team, because they're young, we want to make sure they can be involved, and we want to make sure it's something that's relevant to their age group. Also, you notice here that, let me go back. Great. This is new for me, Mr., I've got this fancy. Okay, here we go. We are looking for volunteers, not just staff, but we are looking for parent volunteers. So we'd like to put that out, if you want to volunteer during lunchtime, you need to be core, but we need parents and staff to help us run this school store to make it a great experience for our students.
Goal, word of the week, school-wide expectations for learning and behavior, classroom discussions.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share our accomplishments, goals, and dreams.
And thank you, Ethan, Leah, Lila, and Jayden, nice job.
Does anybody have any questions? I have to tell you and the group how impressed I am with your leadership skills, it's not easy to get up and talk in front of a large crowd, but I've seen you do this work all year, so it's very good practice for life skills. You're gonna need this when you go on to high school, when you go on to college, and in your jobs, so you're getting great training now in elementary school, and I think you all look fabulous, you did a wonderful job, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, great work. So impressed.
Alright. Any questions or anything?
No, great job, and just thank you for volunteering your time to make things better for the other students here at Acushnet, you know, Ford and Elementary School, so thank you.
So as we continue on our theme of highlighting students, I'd like to call Mrs. Sylvia, the Ford Middle School principal, she has some students in addition to our chorus today, led by Mr. Chamberlain, she's got some other students who will be sharing their talent and their arts, the fine arts.
... on a daily basis in the school. So first up is Ben the Cock, and he's going to... that's my brother.
Thank you. Mrs. Sylvia, can we hire Lucas for our meetings?
He wants to play in cafeteria.
Oh, I love it.
But I think our piano's a prop that we had on stage, he couldn't get it to work, and we tried to play it, and it, so, we couldn't, so thank you.
Lucas, where did you go? Where's Lucas?
There's Lucas.
Have you been taking lessons for a while? Oh, from, oh! Well, that's great, and you're doing a very nice job, keep it up, that's wonderful, thank you for sharing that talent with us.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah.
You look at me, and babe, I wanna catch on fire. It's buried in my soul, California coast. You found the light in me that I couldn't find. So when I'm all choked up, but I can't find the words. Every time we say goodbye, baby, it hurts. When the sun goes down and the band won't play, I'll always remember us this way. Lovers in the night, poets trying to write. We don't know how to rhyme, but darn, we try. And all I really know, you're where I wanna go. The part of me that you will never die. So when I'm all choked up, but I can't find the words. Every time we say goodbye, baby, it hurts. When the sun goes down and the band won't play, I'll always remember us this way. Yeah, yeah. Ooh, 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 ooh. That's when I'm all choked up, but I can't find the words. And every time we say goodbye, baby, it hurts. When the sun goes down and the band won't play, I'll always remember us this way. Yeah, yeah. When you look at me and the whole world fades, I'll always remember us this way.
Lily, that was excellent, and I'm sure if our committee had the powers, they would be giving you the golden ticket. Go on, and I'm sure it's not the last we're hearing of you, right? Is this something that you're interested in doing as you go, you know, as you get older? You like singing? You're really good at it, so keep it up.
Very good.
Thank you for sharing that talent with us tonight.
John's not a bad volleyball player either.
No, plays volleyball too, alright.
We have one more.
Okay.
There's a song that's inside of my soul. It's the one that I've tried to write over and over again. I'm awake in the infinite cold. But you sing to me over and over and over again, so I lay my head back down. And I lift my hands and pray to be only yours. I pray to be only yours. I know now you're my only hope. Sing to me the song of the stars. Of your galaxy, dancing and laughing and laughing again. When it feels like my dream's so far. Sing to me of the plans that you have for me over again, so I lay my head back down. And I lift my hands and pray to be only yours. I pray to be only yours. I know now you're my only hope. I give you my destiny, I'm giving you all of me. I want your symphony, singing in all that I am. At the top of my lungs, I'm giving it back. So I lay my head back down. And I lift my hands and pray to be only yours. I pray to be only yours. I know now you're my only hope.
Thank you so much for sharing your talent with us tonight. I think it's really important that the school committee and the community understand that we have a lot of talent in our district, and sometimes it's not just about the academics that we talk about, but it's about the fine arts and the talent that you've shared with us tonight, all of you who presented tonight, so I'm really, really proud of all of you tonight for coming out. I want to thank the parents for coming out with your children tonight, I think this is so important that we showcase our kids, because we have a lot of great things going on in Acushnet with our kids. Thank you, Alexa, so much.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Well, Mrs. Sheridan, after that, you're up. You're hard act to follow.
I'm here to recognize the school cafeteria super lunch heroes who are all very tired tonight. For those who don't know, today, we had a thousand kids come through our cafeteria lines who didn't know their pin numbers, because going to the new system, we have changed though, which has a very long-term plan in terms of how we're gonna do a lot of our logins, but the super lunch heroes are tired, so we are, I'm recognizing them. You know, at the middle school, we have Becky, Dora, Donna, Carrie at the elementary, Shelley D., Jackie, and Janice, and they are wonderful, I can't think enough of the kinds of things they do for our kids every day, and I always say of them, you know, sometimes they're the one smile, these kids, these guys always get a smile from them. At the elementary school, our manager, Shelley Mellow, is furthering her education in a certificate of excellence class through John Stocker Institute, which we're proud of, and the School Nutrition Association is doing a lot of her tuition funding for that. Becky runs the best program at the middle school, we grow all our lettuce for the salad bars, I, it just astounds me how easy it is for our middle school kids to put together all, see, the fruits and vegetables just are there all the time, and for this year to date, we've served over 8,000 additional meals from last year, so, you know, it's working, we've got a nice program that runs, breakfast continues to be a challenge, if you think that about 60% of our kids eat lunch, only less than 10% come and join us for breakfast, so, we're still working on how we do it. One of the nice parts about breakfast, though, is with the support of Dr. Bailey and Mrs. Flynn, we were able to serve breakfast, full breakfast, to every, every student who was taking MCAS, all of the days that they were serving MCAS, so, that's a tribute to your district that we can pull it together to do those kinds of things very well. Going forward, as I said, we have a new computer program, and other than getting through this week, which I think is gonna remain a challenge, but they will learn, all the parents will learn our numbers by Friday, I hope. More importantly, what this system is going to allow us to do is have all our free and reduced applications online, so parents will no longer have to complete a paper application, which is always one of our challenges in getting back. And just as a part of trivia on that, right now, our population is about 37% free and reduced, so we're looking at, you know, 4 in 10 students are eligible for benefits, circling back to breakfast, how we get those kids in, and how we continue to make it easier for them. Circling back to breakfast, how we get those kids in and how we continue to make it easier for them to eat. So, you know, I think we have a good program. We're proud of it. We loved working with the student council. We're working on a salad bar. It's got a whole bunch of challenges, but we do have a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables as we go in. So I don't know if you have any questions for me.
I just have one comment. I just want to thank Shelley Mellow. She is helping me order all the hot dogs and all the supplies that we need for Hot Dog Day for the Akushna Elementary School. So just to let you know, she has been amazing. Shelley has helped me for the past four years, order all the hot dogs for, for all the students. And I can't thank her enough to make my life a little bit easier to put on Hot Dog Day.
Being an equal opportunity food service director, we do the same at the middle school.
I haven't got involved in that one yet.
When it comes there, we'll also provide that.
Fantastic.
I just feel so fortunate to have you as our nutrition director. You know, sometimes we're last minute, you know, with the school things, and you're always right there. You're always with a positive attitude, like, let's make it happen. When we asked you about the MCAS breakfast, it was something different and new, but I think you looked at it as a positive for our children, and it happened. So thank you so much. And as I said, when we recognize all of your workers in the CAF, sometimes this is the best part of the day for our children. And our superheroes don't need to wear capes. They wear aprons. So thank you for all you do and your staff does. I think you do a great job here in Akushnet. Much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The next thing we have is information regarding the next phase of the fields. Is Mr. Makarako here? Oh, okay. Do you want to go to the podium and present? Oh, okay.
I think that would scare him a little bit. I just want to say that was excellent, awesome job. Good job.
So you're not going to get up and sing?
No song.
All right.
So as you know, we started out that what I'm seeking now is the actual approval to put the irrigation in. That was part of the initial proposal. And some of the funds are already actually gone. I'd like to pay for the funding, but the money already included the irrigation part of it. So we're just looking for the actual approval from the board to now install that. As far as the water, how we're going to get it, we're going to work with the town, the school, and Akushnet itself. The fencing is going to be through us, so we're going to be taking care of the fencing part of it. And I know there was a question on the, the letter that we had sent regarding the AYSA use of fields. Just to clarify that a little bit. What we mean by that is, we're not talking about any students, anybody that lives in Akushnet. We're talking more about a outside organization, like a, say, Michael's or, or something like that coming in and us not being able to use the field now because they're there. That's what it is.
I think that's fair. Was there anything in the written document that they sent to us that any committee members have questions on?
I think we were gonna, I think we had discussed having just legal counsel review it to make sure that it was within our parameters, that we could do it.
But was there anything non-included that you wanted to see included before we send that off?
Not that I recall.
No.
Yeah, not that I recall.
And as far as irrigation, it's going to be, of course, children front. I mean, we've got to look at that too, because as you all know, it's not adults' point, it's actually kids'. So we've got to look at that aspect too. So that's why we're working with the school, with the town of Akushnet, and the fencing part. As you can see, it's, it's come a long way already. We've got that walkway. And I mean, that's, that's going to benefit everybody. Doesn't do anything for me as a soccer coach, because we play on the grass. But for the parents and everybody else that's, you know, sitting there with their kid, that's an area to, to walk around. So it's, it's coming a long way. And then the fencing, of course, we all know what that's for, is protect the kids and keep traffic off the fields. We don't need an incident like that again. The irrigation, I mean, we, we'll have follow-up info on that as far as the company and everything else. Not going to be blindsided. So it's, I mean, we're working with the school with that.
Okay.
That's all we're seeking on this.
So we appreciate your presentation tonight, and I think we're at the point where we need to review it as a committee. We're going to go through our legal, and then we will be in touch with both of you about when we'll come back to the committee and take a vote on your request. And it should be fairly soon, within the next meeting or two.
I think so.
Because I know you want to continue. I, I really appreciate everything you're doing out there. It looks fabulous.
It does look fabulous.
And it is for the kids.
I mean, I just want to follow up on that. I mean, I know a lot of people are worried about who's going to pay for the water and stuff like that. We have talked, you know, to the Akushna, to the town of Akushna with that. We're looking at putting a separate meter, so that the taxpayers are not paying for it, the school is not paying for it. That we'll put in a separate meter for AYSA to pay for it. So it's going to come out of our organization to pay for the, for the water.
Okay.
So the residents will be paying for it, the school will be paying for it. So I just want to put that clear, that AYSA is going to be paying for the water though.
Okay.
And that'll all be in the documentation that we receive?
Right. So we're, it's under review, and then we'll come back within a month or two. I'll let you know in ahead of time if you want to come back to the meeting where we will take a vote, where the committee will take a vote.
And if you have any information you need to send us in the meantime, you know, send it through email, and I can, you know, get it out to the members so they can read it. If you want to give us any irrigation information that you have, once we have legal counsel review the document that you sent over, we can let the committee know that that's been vetted through legal. It's just to make sure, you know, we don't know who's going to be here in 10 years from now. We just want to make sure that we're, you know, that everyone's covered. I mean, we all have the same goals in mind. It looks fantastic. We're all excited, and I'm excited to use the, the walkway.
Should we walk in later?
I absolutely will be using that with my golden, so yes. So we're all excited for it. We just want to make sure that all of our bases are covered.
I did have a question. So right now, the fields, we can't use it. The kids can't use it at all. It's hands-off. With this vote of the irrigation, is this delaying now any grass and all that stuff? Are we, everything on hold now until our next, so everything's on hold?
Well, that's, yeah, that's the thing that we have to move right now that we can't, because if we start putting the loom down and the hydro seed and all that, it's just going to get weeds and it's not going to grow properly and stuff like that. So I think we're looking at the quick, we can get an answer for the irrigation so we can get this moving. So that way, it can start growing. That way, it can hopefully be ready for the school year when the kids come back in September, you know. But the more we prolong it, the longer it's going to take for us to get done with that base.
Okay. All right, good to know. Thank you.
I mean, I mean, I know you're looking at the other, you know, the big picture and all that, but I think the irrigation is the biggest issue right now. I mean, I don't, it's not a big, I mean, a lot of people that I've talked to around the towns like that, and they're, they're excited about the whole project, but their biggest thing is, are you putting irrigation? That's the first question that they keep on asking me, the residents. Are you putting irrigation? If you're not, then that's just wasting the money. You know, and that's why I keep on hearing, like, if you're putting irrigation, then it's worth it. But if you're not, then you're just doing all this for nothing.
Rather than do the water cannons that you had at once discussed, right?
Yeah. It's just hard with the water cans. Yeah, we're going to have to move it around and, and it's just too much work.
And we still have to get enough pressure into the water cans.
Correct.
So now we have to run the, the long hoses on top of the grass, move that over the grass, move the pumps over. So with this, it just actually, once we turn it on, it just sprays. I mean, if we have as much rain as we have the last couple of days, we won't need anything.
Right.
But you know how July and August comes? There's no rain, and then the hydro seed, it's not going to hold. With the kids walking on it and everything else.
So not putting anyone on the spot, I just figured we'll have a quick discussion, because it is technically not on the agenda to vote. So it's just, it's just a discussion to see how everyone feels. What do, you know, what are our feelings as far as irrigation in itself? And then making sure there's an agreement in place for water? Or do we all want to wait and just discuss it all at one time? I mean, I'm just going to speak for myself. For myself personally, I do not have a problem putting in irrigation. My concern is the commitment of who is in charge of the water bill? You know, what if something happens with, you know, one of our maintenance, you know, custodians is cutting the grass and they, I don't know. I know it sounds kind of, you know, sounds silly. Something happens, you know?
I get your point, because it may, I mean, and if that happens, happens, we'll be responsible to be replacing any heads that get broken and stuff like that. AYSA will be responsible for the irrigation that's broken, any of that stuff. And if the school department don't have the power to be cutting the grass or like that, we'll be looking at DPW to cut the grass. If not, we will hire a company that obviously will get the approval from the school committee, that will get a landscaper company to come over and cut the grass and stuff like that. Approve insurance, you know, license and all that if the school department can't handle that, because it's going to be a lot, a lot of grass to cut.
And I think, I think all of these things is what sounds wonderful. And I think, and, you know, just seeing it in black and white and making sure it's all signed off on so that...
AYSA is willing to spend the money on these fields, you know, and so that these kids have something to play on. You know, I mean, we have no problem spending the money and making these fields look great and stuff like that. But we, we just need the approval to get these moved so we can get this going for these kids.
Okay. So what are, so what are our thoughts? Because I just want to, it's, it's our meeting.
Instead of the cannons, you're, you're going to do the heads in the ground?
Yeah.
What's the location on those? Are they just, are they going to be on the perimeters of the field? Are they going to be in the middle?
They're going to come in and actually site it. So they're going to get the best location, most amount of maximized water, and even, because it's coming off of the fire hydrant, we'll be turning it on. So we have to make sure that it covers the amount of areas. So as far as how many heads and the exact location, we don't know. We're going to try to keep them off the fields, you know what I mean? So it'll all be on the outside of the fields, but we can move fields in between, so.
So these are going to be the larger ones like they have at the golf course?
Correct, at least something like that. So we have some work, because as you know, we have to move the fields around for, again, maximum location, the amount of wear and tear, so that we don't just use one gold mouth. Because what happens there is, after two seasons, that area's gone.
Right.
So we have, that's why, when you notice, we, we flip fields around. It's because of that. And without irrigation, right now, it's even harder, because it's, it's just dirt. So we're just trying to find little pieces of grass that we can hold. But with, with the new grass, we have to make sure that we now maintain it with water, just like a regular lawn, you know. Unfortunately, it comes out somewhere. Hopefully, it rains a lot on the days that we don't need it, but if it doesn't, that's something we have to keep up with.
So clarifying question, if our next meeting is June 11th? That's our next meeting. So if, so how, if we, if we decide to make a vote on starting the irrigation process of getting someone in, figuring out where all the heads are going to go, how you're going to set it up, prior to turning on the water? If we have the agreement and then we can vote on the water June 11th, does that not matter?
I mean, it's going to take time anyway. Right, right now, the standstill is the actual ditching of the pipe.
Got it.
So we know we're, we're going to get the water from the fire hydrant, we're going to get a meter.
And we're going to get an agreement in place to say you're going to cover it?
That's not the main issue right now. The main issue is putting that pipe down. Because without ditching it, we can't drop the seed.
We're waiting.
We can't drop the loom.
I have a safety question. If we're, and this might be a silly question, but if you're taking all the water from the fire hydrants, is that going to affect the school's safety as a building or anything?
According to them, no.
According to who?
We're not going to be used by department.
Okay.
We're not going to be using that much water. It's not something that stays on for eight hours.
Okay.
It's, it's broken down. I mean, this is a golf course, so.
And you'll work that out with Kristen, so it's not going on?
So it'll be something that we, we set up with them, something we set up with the golf course.
DPW here.
So if the committee's on board. Figure it out that way.
It's on the timer, right. It's on the timer.
Okay.
Each, each zone will probably take half hour, each zone, that's, I mean, it's not like it will be hours and hours.
And it wouldn't be during school hours?
No, 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 no. It'll be overnight.
Unless you guys want to have, you know, a field day out there and you want to make it cool, that's fine.
Might take you up on that.
So another thing we can do, Mr. Sumner had a good idea as well, is we could discuss, I know we had talked about getting it vetted through legal. If, I mean, we don't anticipate legal taking a long time to review the agreement. So how does the committee feel voting on it with, you know, voting on it as long as it gets properly vetted through legal? And, right, in lieu of legal's approval? I'm personally okay with it. I don't really want to hold up the project. I just want to make sure that we're crossing our t's and darting our i's.
I'm comfortable with that approach.
You're, you're okay with that? I mean, but be honest, you know, because this isn't really on for a vote, so it's, it's our choice.
So they, so they would start the construction of the irrigation, and then by our June 11th meeting, you would have all the documentation for our legal to review? Or before that, we would have?
We're thinking before, right?
I would think as soon as we have it. Because we already have the agreement. It just has to get vetted through legal. We weren't able to get it to legal in time, because we, we did just, we just got it.
Okay.
So if we can get that vetted through legal, then do we make a, you know, motion to approve, I don't know.
Pending legal?
Pending, right, pending legal approval? Mrs. Tatar, what do you think?
I'm fine with it.
You're okay? All right, he's quiet over there. I want to check. Okay, so.
That will expedite things.
That would expedite, you know, expedite it and get that out, and then once we hear back from legal to review the contract.
I also want to make sure that with any kind of irrigation materials that you're using, that Mrs. Flynn, maybe Andrew should get involved with this too, to make sure, like, they're on board with what is actually going out on our fields? Because personally, I don't know what a sprinkler head looks like or if it's going to affect kids. Is this something that the, maybe the gym teachers need to look into and just see what they're going to be like? Or head of maintenance or anything like that? I mean, is that...
For the most part, they retract below the ground, right?
Okay, I don't know.
Yes, so you're walking on it. You don't need to...
He wants, okay. I just want to make sure that this is...
It sprays, and then once it's done, it seeps back into the ground. So you can still, we actually go to a bunch of fields where we actually play right over them.
Okay.
So we just mark them so that we, you know, we know where they are and when we're cutting grass. A lot of the fields, what they're doing is they'll mark it with some kind of paint, so they say, okay, there's a sprinkler head there, so that we avoid running it over and smashing it. But it does sink below the ground, maybe, and it...
Okay. I just want to make sure that this is vetted through to everybody who uses these fields, because you know how, how that happens? You know, you do one thing and they're like, oh, you never told the person that's actually using what's going on, and I don't want that to happen.
I mean, our biggest concern there, I mean, we have over 700 kids that are playing throughout the year. So that's our biggest concern, is, you know, a kid getting hurt on the field. So of course, that's, the, the pumps, that was one of our concerns, with somebody actually running into one of these things and getting knocked out. Where these are, we believe it's a little safer where they're lower, below the ground, then they shouldn't be tripping on them. I mean, accidents do happen, we know that, but they could trip on a rock. So it's below the ground, it's not something that's going to obstruct walking or running. It's lower than the actual walkway.
Okay. And just to throw out this for argument's sake, let's say some of them malfunction, let's say 10 of them malfunction. We, just, I know, knock on wood, that doesn't happen, but let's say, you know, we're in the middle of field day next year, and all of a sudden, there's a bunch of them still up. Like, who handles the maintenance? Is that going to be part of the documentation?
They pop up with water pressure.
Okay, so this is not something that they're going to...
The kids would love it, Mrs. Flynn.
I know they would. But, you know, I'm just thinking, the gym teachers are like, what do I do with this? So the maintenance and stuff, you would handle anything that broke? And that would be part of the documentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Speaking from personal experience, obviously, I don't have a soccer field in my backyard, but we do have the sprinklers. We've not had any issues in over like 12, 15 years with them. I mean, they pop up on the timer, they go back down, you know, so.
And they're easy to fix.
They're easy to fix.
They're plastic piping. So in the, the head itself, it's not a big metal object. The, the whole thing is, it's almost like a PEX tubing. And you just snip them, replace them, and back in the ground.
So I can't remember, because I was counting on legal to review the document, and more, was the exclusive rights in the agreement that you just sent us a no? Did it clear, it was? So I, now, that to me, right, so I think for myself, I feel comfortable voting on the irrigation. And I feel comfortable voting on some sort of agreement about water when that's ready. But I am a little more wary on the exclusive rights and what that's going to look like. I just, that one makes me nervous.
I think what will happen is the attorney will most likely tweak the agreement. He's going to come back and there's going to be changes presented to us. We will present it to you. I think if you wanted to take a vote on the irrigation...
On the irrigation, perfect.
So that they can get what, their ducks in a row, not start until we send you the agreement back, but at least we're getting things ready to go. So I think the irrigation is the one thing that you would like us to vote on.
Right. Right, okay.
As far as the exclusive rights, again, I just need to clarify this. Exclusive rights does not mean that field back there belongs to us.
No, but when you write exclusive rights, it's, it's a binding document, so that's why there's concerns about it. So we're going to have our attorney check it out. We'll tweak it, send it back to you, and if we're all in agreement, we move forward with it.
But I just want everybody to know, we just don't want to have, sink all this money into it.
That's right.
And all of a sudden, this outside entity from Marion shows up and says, we're playing here, CLA. That's, I think, that's what we're looking at. It's not the softball, because you know what? It's Akushna Res... To Kushnet Resin, absolutely you have the right to be there. It's not the children playing, you know, a pickup game of football or soccer because yes, you're gonna go out there. It's those outside entities where we're sinking some money into this and all of a sudden we can't use the field anymore because Marion is here playing.
Right, right.
I understood, we understand.
All right.
That was my concern, was exclusive, you know, that the town residents, I'm not looking to give it to another outside entity. I'm just wanna make sure. The other question I have is it's kinda more towards Mr. Oliver. Seeing that they're sinking the kinda money that they're sinking into this, do we have the capability with our cameras to capture those fields? In case someone was to go through there with a quad and, and, and damage the fields on these guys or do something stupid? Where we would be able to capture them and, and they would have recourse?
That's a good question, Mr. Detera. Right now, the way the cameras are set up in the back, we do have some coverage of the fields. However, one of my thoughts where once the fields are complete, what we could do is we could look to put a camera on the, the sewer station lift pump house. That's out there, that's a little bit more centered in the field. Not only that, that would provide security to the fields, but also we could look to put in a outdoor access point to provide a public wifi to the fields as well. But yeah, right now we do have limited, we do have some coverage. It's not the best coverage, but right now currently we do have that coverage.
Okay.
Given that we have seven hundred kids playing on that, it might be a good idea that we, for other safety reasons as well, to get a camera out there covering the fields.
On the camera, I, I do yield a lot of it considering what I do for a living. The higher it is, the worse it is to capture anybody. The lower it is at eye level, the easier it is to see a person.
So the pump house would probably be the best spot for it cause it's set it in the field, so you can get high rise cameras for that.
Yeah, okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, so we ready, do we feel comfortable making a motion about the irrigation?
Yes, I'm comfortable.
As far as the hydro seed, Kristen, do you know if there's a regulation that we have to send notices out to the kids once we lay that down? With the fertilizer and?
Well, for pesticides, yes, there's pesticide regulations and we send notices out. For regular grass seed, I'm not aware of anything.
With a fertilizer that goes along with it?
That would be something we'd have to consider as well if there's fertilizer that's into it. But you know, there is a, we, we do have to notify whenever we put any pesticides or if we spray for bees or, or whatever, so that is a good question.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah, so do I have a motion to approve the irrigation phase to, to the field, to the soccer fields? Does that work? Do you want me to include anything else in the motion? Right, not to proceed actually building the system, right, until approval of the document? Until it's vetted through, until it's right prior to pending approval through legal. Okay, so does that make sense?
Don't have that.
Do that by email? Right, we can give, right, as soon as that gets vetted and that's approved, then we can, um, okay.
And if there's other portions of the phase that need to be voted on, we can do that at the next meeting. But maybe you can get this started earlier once we send you the email, you know, once we receive it back from legal.
The only concern I have is if the exclusive rights is within that document, then I think that document should come back in front of the board before that gets approved.
I don't think the motion is about the document.
Right, I think the motion is just to approve the irrigation phase of the, of the project. And so that the construction of the irrigation.
Okay.
Does that work? Does that make, does that better? All right, so do you have a motion to approve the construction phase of the irrigation of the project?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, there you go. Irrigation, sorry that took so long. It just wasn't on the agenda and we needed to vet it out.
As far as the exclusive rights, would it be easier if you drafted something removing that so that you guys could send to legal?
Yes. That would be, that would be easier.
As soon as you send it.
Well, I understand, I completely get it.
And then we can work on that. We're not saying no to that. I think that just is gonna take a little bit longer to figure that language out, that's all. Okay, does that work? Everyone's happy? All right, have fun. Can't wait to see it. Getting worked on. All right, sorry everyone. Thank you for letting us work that out. All right.
Okay, personnel matters. In your packet, you have a resignation. I'm just gonna go through this. You have three job descriptions that need a vote tonight on each one and assuming that you'll do those separately.
Yeah.
The first one is for to establish an English language learning teacher. We've currently gone through a vendor for this and as discussed in several school committee meetings and at budget sessions, we feel that we can save twelve thousand dollars by bringing on our own and we would actually have an increase in ours. So it'd be a full-time staff, a teacher with a savings so we don't have to go out to a vendor. So that's the first one. The second one is a director of student services formerly called director of special education. There were some tweaks in that job description. That's why all of these are in front of you tonight because there's something new about them. As far as director of student services, it's not just exclusive to special ed, but it's EL. It's McKinne Vento, foster care and basically all services that these children require assistance with. And then the last one is the director of curriculum instruction and assessment. We've talked about that as well. So all of them would need, I believe, a separate vote from the committee as we move forward with this.
All right, should we do a roll call on you to them or is it just a, I'm not sure I'm asking?
I don't think it requires, yeah, I don't think so.
You think we should?
I don't think so. No, I don't think it requires one. So what I'll do is I'll put a motion in a second, then I'll see if we have any discussion and then I'll see what the votes are. Does that work? So can I have a motion to approve the EL teacher job description as presented?
Motion?
Second, second, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. That passes unanimously. All right, can I have a motion to approve the director of student services job description as presented?
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, any discussion? No, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, passes unanimously. And can I have a motion to approve the director of curriculum instruction and assessment as presented?
Motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion? No, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, passes unanimously. So we're all set?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, the next item is my end of the year evaluation. I think the easy thing for me tonight is that we've been talking about this all year. So it's, none of this is anything new to the committee members. We've actually reviewed this throughout the year. I've attached several documents for your review tonight. And what I will do is I will give you an update and then I will explain the process of how we will go about my evaluation. And then if you have any questions, okay? So if you go to, very similar to what I did at mid-year, the educators' goals template, which looks like this. I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you, but I wanna review each of the goals and talk about the things that we've accomplished in the district this year. So the first one is to promote ongoing student achievement by conducting a comprehensive review of the current K to eight curricula, which includes math, science, ELA, history, social studies, the humanities. And basically, we've, we've focused a significant amount of time on this this year. We started by reviewing core values at the beginning of the year. Really getting our classrooms to embrace critical thinking, problem solv, problem solving, accountable talk, student enthusiasm, creativity and just their growth mindset in terms of how they learn and how they think. So in all of our efforts to date, this has really been done in a cross-district manner. We have educators from both the elementary and the middle school who have been involved in these discussions. As you know, this started long ago with my listening tours and then it just continued with learning walks that are conducted once to twice a month with the principals, the building leaders. And then we've also focused on a more vertically aligned system of professional development this year. We have had the two buildings staff come together when it's appropriate, when it's similar PD, so that it doesn't feel so separate. We've had monthly meetings of the district improvement team with the goal of developing a consistent instructional model that works across grade levels and content areas, as well as beginning the discussions of adopting new curriculum materials. And I've said all along that this is not something that we jump right into. Lots of times districts will spend an enormous amount of money and after a year or two of doing it, we find out we don't like it. So we've had people piloting several programs and as you know, there's been a big focus this year with math at the middle school level as we talked about in science. The, the principals, both at the elementary and the middle school, they're giving feedback on a bi-weekly basis regarding the teaching and learning at their schools. And we, we, it's inclusive when we talk about budget matters with the principals. They bring it to the teachers and everybody has a voice in these decisions. We did a curriculum inventory. We really got everything together in terms of what exists currently with our curriculum. We know that a lot of it is outdated. But the most important thing is that our teachers teach from the standards. And as you know, I participate in the new superintendent's induction program. And that will go across all of my goals because we do so much that encompasses the whole job of superintendent. We've done research on curriculum programs and our staff and our leaders have attended webinars. We've had vendors come in to present different programs to us. I think it's important to note that we were able to get a, a town article for fifty thousand dollars for a curriculum. So we know that's there when we need it and we can spend that as we need it. And, and you know, in my opinion, that's phase one. I mean, we're still going to need more, but it's a great start and we really appreciate the support from the town on that. We've talked about a restructure plan to inform the budget for the next school year. And we've proposed, again, with the input from staff, from the committee, from the budget subcommittee, the adoption of a curriculum director, a new EL teacher and the tweaking of a job description for the director of student support services, which was formerly the special ed director. I meet monthly with the leadership from Fairhaven Public Schools. And obviously I meet with the other districts, but we really have a focus with Fairhaven right now to ensure cohesiveness with the middle school curriculum, alignment of courses of study. That will not happen overnight, but it's a conversation that needs to continue. As you know, our kids from Akushnet have not had the same opportunities in Fairhaven. You know, the folks in Fairhaven have felt that our kids have not been prepared to take some of the advanced classes. So our goal is to work with them to fix that. If we have to offer some different classes at the middle school, we can look into that. But we have the lines of communication open and we are discussing that on an ongoing basis. The second goal, does anybody have any questions about the first one?
No, it was great, thank you.
The second one is more of the same, to apply lessons and activities from the NSIP and build the, which is the new superintendent's induction program and build my capacity as an effective leader within the Akushnet Public Schools. So not to read everything to you, but just to give you an update since mid-year. As you know, we've already talked about my entry plan. I have regular meetings with my coach. Using key takeaways from all of my meetings at MAS S and MAS C in my role. Attended the MasQ conference, collaboration with principals from other districts, constantly to evaluate other PD opportunities for our staff. So whenever we can jump on and it doesn't cost us anything, it's really hard sometimes for a small district to offer everything when we might have two nurses or, you know, one speech therapist. And they're offering these trainings that are a little more relevant to people in the roles. We're really trying to reach out to these districts and I have to tell you, the response has been very good. The other districts have welcomed us with open arms and said, sure, as long as it works for you, we, we don't mind at all. So that's been good and we have been able to tag on to some of these trainings this year, have people attend. I'm not gonna read you the entire list, but you see that I've attended quite a few professional conferences and webinars. And they're all listed there by date and I will say they've all been pretty relevant. I can't go to everything. But I've really picked out the ones that I thought are more relevant to what's going on in Akushnet and, and my own capacity building. Again, I'm reaching out to the community. I attended the UMass Community Breakfast. I continue to facilitate monthly leadership meetings, facilitate district improvement team meetings. I attend the town department head meetings. And as you know, as I started, I had initial meetings with the fire chief, the police chief, the town administrator, the finance committee, the board of selectmen. So I think we've really worked very well with all of the departments this year and I, I see that only strengthening in the future. We have formed a capital improvement committee with representation from each building to really talk about what the needs, the building needs are, the facility needs. And we did put together a list of priorities and I have to say, the majority of those were approved with the town warrant articles, which was really great. So, and again, we've made our case for the needs of the, of the school and our students. And we will continue to collaborate with that group as needs change. I've already reported all of my entry plan findings to all of the staff, to the school committee. We posted that to the website and the next steps will be to assist the teams in revising our strategic plan and action plan as we move forward. We revise the principals and department head schedules so that they work five days after the school year and five days before the new year begins so that we can all be together on those days. Cause one thing I noticed was, you know, the last day ended and everybody is on a different vacation schedule. So we're really trying to get some alignment with our schedules so we can at least have a few days in the summertime for planning together. And obviously you know that I'm collaborating and attending all of the subcommittee meetings, which include the policy, the budget, the teacher evaluation and the negotiations. I will say, just to give you a little preview to the policy subcommittee, cause we haven't heard from them yet. We've now reviewed four sections of the policy book that I just got back this week. So at next month's meeting, we will be having our first reading of sections A, B, C and D as revised by the subcommittee. And then the following meeting, we will vote as it's informed. But we're looking over two more sections and with the next month, we'll have two more sections done. So it is moving right along. I, I really think it's a great process that we're involved with, with MAS C. Does anybody have any questions about my involvement with NSIP?
No.
I, I wanna thank you for your support of that because I think it's money well spent. It's a super program and there's lots of resources and I'm able to network and I think it's been worth it for me, so thank you. The third one is the, to ensure the integration of social, emotional learning and teaching and learning aspects of the Akushnet Public Schools. So we talked about really just establishing an inventory of what we currently have here in the district, so we have that done. The leadership team and the DIT discussed investigating the establishment of a wellness committee and maybe partnering that with a bullying prevention committee and SEL committee. So as of May, we've established, we've recruited members, which include the key stakeholders, which have to be on that committee by the regs. And that will be the business manager. We have a principal, an administrator from each building who will be the co-chairs. We have a PE teacher, a nurse, parents and anyone who wants to volunteer. We're just getting it up and running, but the goal is to have one meeting before the end of the school year to really just reestablish what the goals will be moving into the next school year. So the co-chairs have been named and it's Angie Rigiri and Scott Johnson. So they're gonna co-chair with everybody else I listed and we will get that going. And we also wanted to ask for a member of the school committee. If anybody was interested, we'd love to have you on that committee as well. We can talk about that later, but you know, if somebody wanted to volunteer to be on that, I'd appreciate it. And then we're continuing to look into PD opportunities for SEL. We did have a handful of staff go to that behavioral health symposium in December and return to the district to talk about the utilization of strategies with their principals and staff. We're continuing to investigate community resources. And as part of the entry report finding, staff and students. And as part of the entry report finding, staff and students expressed concerns about meeting the social, emotional needs of all students and the DIT actually identified this as one of their priorities. So we're really going to look at a subcommittee for this particular area and I already have some staff who have come to me with a strong interest in that area, so I'm really excited about that. And I continue to meet with the superintendents, executive directors from the collaboratives that we work with and the, the other districts, just to continue to strengthen the partnerships in that area. Do you have any questions on that?
Sounds good.
No, but if I-
Okay, the last one-
Mrs., one thing, Mrs. Downing was jumping out of her seat to be on your committee.
Oh, that's one call.
If no one has any objections, do you wanna-
Unless anyone else.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
If anybody else wanted to join, we'll definitely get the meeting dates once we establish, but I'd love for you to be able to go to the first meeting this year.
Sure.
And actually, Ms. Rigori is here, so if you can remember to include Ms. Downing, Mrs. Downing on that invite, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
The last one is to coordinate the negotiation process for all contracts expiring at the end of the 18, 19 school year. And where we're at with that is we did a thorough review of the Unit A contract. An attorney was secured for negotiations. We scheduled a training through MAS C for the negotiation subcommittee. That took place, as you know, in October. Meetings were scheduled through the end of May and actually since writing this, I believe we have another meeting scheduled into June. And we really have to coordinate those meetings with legal counsel because of his schedule. But we collaborated with district leaders, school committee, negotiation subcommittee to discuss recommended changes and rationale for proposed changes. And that's really where we're at. We're making some progress, but we're, we're still in-
Where we're at on that, it's right now heading into the end of the year, which is just a month away, in our major lines, which I've outlined here, you see that we're coming in with a predicted deficit of almost $26,000. And as we've said over the, over this year, this is very unusual for us. In the past, at this time, we're looking at, say, 100 to 300,000 in surplus that we've been able to, you know, we've been able to use at the end of the year to, to get us ready for the next year, to buy some technology, but unfortunately, that's really not the case at all this year. We've had a lot of move-ins for high schools. We've had a lot of move-ins for out of district that are really affecting, you know, what we do within, within our two buildings here. So looking at that, heading in, we've got, like I said, about a $26,000 deficit. You might say, how are we going to fund this? We have some revolving funds that we would prefer not to have to use, but if we have to, we can use some funds in the preschool revolving fund to cover some preschool salaries. We have a small amount in our kindergarten revolving fund that could cover about $2,000 of kindergarten salaries. We have our school building rental revolving fund that we could use to cover some facilities deficits. So we have some flexibility with that and, you know, over the past six months, we've asked our principals and our directors to really be very discretionary about the purchases, the purchase orders they send down, in the event that we needed to have these funds at the end of the year. So right now, we are starting to release some of those purchase orders, but I'm doing them still very carefully because I want to make sure that we can cover our tuition and our transportation bills through the end of the year before we go ahead and do that. So this will continue to watch closely through the end of the year. The next thing is we'll talk about, briefly about next year's budget. We've spent a lot of time over the past couple of months discussing that, but the update is, we had town meeting last week and town meeting approved the school committee's budget of $14,662,271. That's about a 3.2% increase over last year. So that is a very good increase that we, that we have. Unfortunately, due to those same factors, all those move-ins, it's really, you know, that doesn't just impact us this year, of course it impacts us next year because now we have to pay for those students' educations next year as well. So we have about a $300,000 deficit to cover and in the past two to three weeks, we've been meeting with the principals and the department heads and the directors to, to find, to make some budget adjustments and we anticipate concluding that work at the end of the week. So, so that is, you know, in, in all the years that I've been here, in the 13 years I've been here, we haven't faced a situation such as this, but really, it's, it's due to nothing other than students moving into the district that are attending high schools. For example, in our latest look at next year's budget, we had seven, eight children that we had thought were going to either Old Colony, Old Rochester, Bishopstang, New Bedford Vogue, or School Choice, decide that they're now going to Fairhaven. So that's eight students times roughly $10,000 that now is, has to be covered by our school budget, that all those other schools typically wouldn't. So that impacted us. We've had three out of district students move in since March into placements that cost upwards of 50 to 60,000. Some of those students are already here, affecting us this year, which is reflected in the report I just gave, and one student will be starting next year. And those students all require transportation. So each out of district student conservatively can cost us about 90,000 to 100,000 between tuition and transportation. So that's really affected us this year as well. So that's been our major challenges that we've had in our school budget this year and next year, so we'll continue to have to look at that. The other update for the FY '20 budget, Dr. Bailey started to talk, alluded to it a little bit, is in addition to the, to the, to the school department's operating budget, we were also afforded the opportunity to put forward some capital, some warrant requests that we discussed with the finance committee and the board of selectmen and that were put up for vote at town meeting. So I'm happy to report that mostly all of our requests were approved by the board of selectmen and the finance committee and town meeting. So the second sheet you have lists all of the requests that we had. So in, the biggest one is the curriculum update and then we have some, some money to upgrade our burglar alarm, our fire alarm, to put air conditioning in the server room to protect all of our computer equipment at the elementary school and, and also to do some technology equipment refresh, to buy some replaced projectors, whiteboards, front row systems, things that over the years have either broken or gotten outdated. We have some funds to continue to repair our roadways in the school, some funds to upgrade the fire alarm, the roof condensers at the elementary school, some funds to continue to do some roof repairs until hopefully we are accepted by the MSBA as part of their, their construction grant for, to replace a section of the roof. And they also changed their mind and decided to grant our request to upgrade the HVAC server. At first, that was something that wasn't approved, but it was on the warrant at town meeting, so we're not complaining. So all those together, total capital requests, including the curriculum, is 230,000 and they also funded an additional 50,000 in the special education stabilization fund, which to balance next year's budget, we are already taking 50,000 out. So had we not had that fund, we would have be, we would be facing close to $350,000 in, in budget cuts instead of 300,000. So that is something that has become very important to us this, this year especially. So, does anyone have any questions at all?
No, thank you for the update.
So that stabilization now has $100,000 in it now, even after using-
Yes, right, because we, we received 100,000 last year. We received 50 this year, but we're withdrawing 50, correct.
And when will we know about the MSBA approval?
The board meets on June 26th to, for the vote and they said that districts will find out approximately a week before. So we've been in, I've been in contact with them. They had a site visit earlier this month. They sent some follow-up documentation that was required. I just submitted that to them and they've been very helpful in the process, but they did say that they have received more and more requests each year and so they're able to fund less and less. So that's been the trend, unfortunately. But, you know, we'll give it a shot and if we don't, if we're not approved this year, we'll go after it for next year.
Thank you. Right? Any other questions?
Yeah. How much money are we currently spending on an attendance officer?
The salary for the attendance officer is $6,000 and then is travel reimbursement.
Okay. My concern with that is I think there's a lot of people that are coming here that don't belong here. I would like to see us look into trying to find some money somewhere to increase that. I know I see some things that, just traveling around town, when I get, I get down by the line, Fabe, and I go to see my dad and I see people get off the bus, get into cars and drive into New Bedford, so I know, I know there's stuff going on. I would like to talk with Andy Wada, see what our recourse is. I would like to send a letter home threatening people to tell them, if you are caught, we will take you to court and we will get reimbursement for someone that does not belong in this district. I think we need to really ramp up our efforts on that. I think we need to start sending out a strong message that we're not going to take this and if we catch you, we are going to take you to court.
So the students that we've caught through investigation this year have all been sent letters to register at their neighborhood districts. It's not a ton of kids, but the ones that we've been able to get confirm some evidence, we have sent them letters. But if you want to discuss changing the structure of the way this is done with the position, I think that would probably be a good breakout conversation at one of our workshops in terms of how other districts may do it, what it looks like, maybe we talk to legal about it. Yeah, it's up to you, but you know, we have had some success, not a lot.
The ones that have been caught, have there been extra costs for tuition?
Like for example, I think we have one next year that we know about at the high school, at Fairhaven High School, who is not in district and will be registering at their, at their neighborhood high school next year. But a lot of them have been middle and elementary too, so as we get them, but you know, keeping in mind, there are many mixed families today and sometimes, you know, one parent lives in town, the other one lives in another town, there's a split custody, they have, so sometimes things look a certain way where they're being dropped off, but when they present the legal paperwork, we have, our hands are tied. We have to follow the regulations and the laws in terms of what we allow children to attend school. If they have proof of residency, and in some cases, they are proving residency as we look into situations that we hear about. Other situations could be homelessness. So when a student becomes homeless and they may not live in town, we legally have to keep them in our system at the parent's request and provide transportation if needed. So it, there's a lot of regulations that we have to follow too, but we do investigate. We have a process this year that we came up with a form. If any staff member knows about an issue or is concerned, they send it to their principal, they write it up, the principal signs off on it, sends it to our registrar and then the investigation begins. So that's the way the process currently works.
I would, I would love to see it come up to a next, you know, to a workshop because, and really get an idea to see what other districts, excuse me, are doing. I know some districts even work with their, you know, they have relationships and they're able to work with their local law enforcement because the reality is any money that we can save on our end is money, in hindsight, right, less money we, we save the town. So, so I would just, I'd like to bring it up at a workshop and see, and, and to your point as well, I'd like to see what options we have as far as when someone is unfortunately caught lying or in this case, they do get it signed off, they do get it notarized. What options do we have to maybe hold them accountable in a different way?
Mm-hmm. I, I still think the high school tuition moving forward is going to continue to be a problem. We have a lot of development going on in town.
Agreed.
Our numbers, our enrollment is the highest it's been in many years and I only see it continuing to rise. So we are in the process, as we talked about, of forming a subcommittee. We'd like that to consist of the neighbor, neighborhood towns, neighboring towns, Fairhaven, New Bedford, some staff, some parents, community, but we've got to figure out, we have so many fixed costs in our budget that makes it very difficult to, you know, you know, sustain things that we want to sustain and that's why I think we're struggling this year because we had so many unexpected, unbudgeted things happen in terms of these move-ins, the special education costs. Those are all fixed costs that we have to pay for. So, you know, we just want to have a subcommittee really look at what are our options in the future for high school options for our kids. And we're in a tuition agreement, agreement right now with New Bedford and Fairhaven. Maybe that looks different at some point. And I know I've talked to the superintendent in Fairhaven, he's very willing to be on this committee and talk with us, but we've got to get that going now. So I think that's something this summer that we can actually start that work because I think it's going to continue to be an issue moving forward.
And I do think the finance committee said it great when we presented to them that evening, right, they did say that we knew that, they acknowledged that they knew that this would start to become a problem, the more beautiful homes we're building and, and all of that, that you're attracting families to come into town and so eventually they make their way into high school somehow.
Right.
So, all right.
And I just will add that in terms of our list of priorities, when we do get those inquiries as far as resident questions, we prioritize the high school students first just because we are paying tuition. So.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. All right, almost finishing up. School committee member reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up?
Good.
No? Okay.
I have.
Okay. That's okay.
We are having a little toy meeting on, on May 23rd at 9:15. So I'm hoping by the next official school committee meeting, we have an update on, on what the plan is for, for that school playground area.
Excellent. Anything else? All right. Any communication and information?
Yeah, we just have a couple of things. Did you want to talk about this one?
Sure. In your packet, we have a letter from the Department of, of Elementary and Secondary Education, letting us know that the, the application for circuit breaker extraordinary relief that was filed by our special, special education department has been approved. So what that is, is that they look at what your actual special education allowable costs are for this year and if it's more than 25% than last year, they afford you circuit breaker extraordinary relief. So after doing the worksheet, after being reviewed by the Department of Ed, they're going to be giving us an additional 32,639. So that is great news and you can see that it was factored into the budget update. So had we not applied for and received those funds, we would have a deficit of almost $40,000. So that's really going to help us out this year and that's money you have to spend right away. And the point is, you get it because you need it. So it's going to be helping us out greatly. You know, we would be in a lot worse shape than if we didn't have it. So, you know, thanks to the special education department for their diligence in, in getting this done for us. And then they'll be filing the regular circuit breaker claim as of the end of the year and that'll be determined what funds we get for next year. The good news is we will be getting more circuit breaker relief, but the bad news is, is the more you spend, the more you get. So we get more revenue, but it's because our costs have gone up.
Yeah. So there are some informational things in your packet, but I guess I want to finish out the meeting by saying that we decided that on Friday at 10:15, we are going to have a tree dedication to Mary, for Mary Carter, in honor of Mary Carter. I'm just announcing the time right now because I just spoke to the family today, but just for those residents that don't know, we, my secretary, Mary Carter, who has worked for Akushnet Public Schools for many, many years, is retiring and we are honoring her. We decided to just plant a tree in her honor and I have to say, it was so heartwarming to just see how this one tree came to become plants and rose bushes and a bench was ordered, a pathway, and all of this was done through donations, including the ATA donated over $500 for the bench, but staff have made donations and it's really quite special and I want to extend an invitation to the committee. I will be inviting people from the town. It's going to be very laid back. It's just a quick recognition of Mary for the many years that she has worked here and her dedication to our students and all of the educators here in Akushnet. But I just want to publicly say that the money for all of it, it's just the donations have been pouring in and I think that speaks volumes for how much people love Mary Carter. So I want to thank everybody publicly right- So I want to thank everybody publicly right now. But I would love as many people to attend who can attend. I will work with the principals in terms of, you know, if they can get some coverage going during the day. But the morning time, the time that we have is really the best time for the family. So we will be doing that Friday morning at ten fifteen. So if anybody could come out for that, it will be short. But it will, you know, if you could make it, I'd really appreciate it. And I'd also like to extend the invitation to the whole public. Anybody who has a personal connection to Mrs. Carter is welcome, and I know she'd appreciate that. So thank you all so much.
And thank you for putting that together and working on that.
Thank you.
All right. Our next regular school committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, June eleventh, at five-thirty here in the library. Can I have, we do not need executive session. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Roll call? I guess we'll do a roll call to adjourn. Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Aye.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. DeTerra?
Yes.
And I. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.